All right. So we will start our first Finance Committee meeting of 2025. Yay, welcome back, everybody. A lot of fun stuff on the agenda tonight. Mr. Miracle, if you want to start first. So, Mr. Miracle, we talked a little bit about it in December, but we looked at that Ohio State Finance Schedule and have converted it into the city's schedule and what we need to do.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Winnebauer. A couple things that we've added to the website. The first one that we added was the Auditor's Timeline, which I think you have a copy of. So we have what we're going to be working on and what is due in that particular month, and we have it spelled out for each month. For example, January is when we create the new Certificate of Estimated Resources. Those are due to be filed with the Hammond County Auditor by January 31st. We did it about two weeks ago. Don't like to wait till the deadline. So that's taken care of. And then you can see some of the things that are going to be required moving forward. The idea here is give you the whole year so you can review. And then as our meetings come forward, if something has to have three readings, we know this is the date we should be starting, right? So just something visual for you. Anybody can look at it. It's, like I said, it's on the Auditor's website. So if anything in your particular interest, you want to know when it's due for us to work on, you can refer to this. So that's one of the things that we did. And we've done some details in here. There might be some editing where we add some additional information on there, maybe to provide some more clarity or transparency. But this was a good start to get it out there so everyone can look at it. If you're not here at the meeting, you can look at home as we're trying to put as much information out there as possible. So that was the Auditor's Timeline. We could go in that each month when we talk a little bit. Also, one of the things that we have added to the Auditor's website is the Auditor of State's Digital Calendar. If you go on there and review that, you will see quite a lot of information on there. That's for the whole year of 2025 by month. On the left side, you will see what particularly pertains to us. So they've got some additional information on the other side. So it's full of dates on there that we need to have things filed by. So just another calendar that you can look at, look forward and say, hey, this is due this month. And we should start talking about that six, eight weeks out prior if at all possible. So just some information that we've added there. So you'll see some more detail added to the Auditor's Timeline. So those are two things that we did. Additionally, we have an Excel spreadsheet that I've worked on for the Report on Accounting Methods. The Report on Accounting Methods is on the website, the very detailed page broken down. So what I've done, and Candace, that's why she's sitting there, we'll go through this. We have taken all of the Auditor of State comments. There are 34 total. You'll see the Reports section, and that directly correlates to the page of the Report on Accounting Methods. So for budgetary system, you'll see three items on there, and they're all on Page 10 in the Auditor's report. So you can go to there, a little more detail there. And then as you scroll down, you'll see what pages all those particular sections begin at. So if you're interested in reading those in a little more detail. So we have the Auditor of State comment. And what we'd like to do, beginning this month, we're going to review this, and we will do this each month. We'll come back in February. And what we want to do is have a tab. So we'll have January '25, then we'll have February and so forth so we can go back and review, kind of track our progress. So what you'll see here, beginning up the top, you'll see there are some things that we've already taken care of. You will see a lot of been tested, going to test again, been tested in '21, '22, '23, they need to test it again. I've spoken to Anna Mary about this. What we'd like to do is start the process of, hey, what are you going to come in next? Let's set that expectation so we can start putting a timeline to this. And each one of these comments, we have, there are some comments that might be one department. There are some comments that might be two, and then some, maybe several, that we're working on in a collaborative effort. So the beginning, at the top of the page, you'll see that those are budgetary. The top three are budgetary. So we have comments that we've put all the way over to the right. Those were the last comments that I've received from the Auditor of State. And the goal is to update those when we do get some information. You'll see those over there, all the way to the right, from Anna Mary and her team. So then I think what we had talked about was putting an additional column so we could put when we would estimate completion date. So the focus here is, here's what we need to do. Here's who's working on it. When do we think that we can get this completed? And then each month, I'm going to send this back to Auditor of State, to Anna Mary's intention, and we'll work to be able to update comments and fill those in. So some of them, quite simple. I think the very last one, not to jump out of order, Mrs. Winnebauer, but I think it's number 34, if I remember correctly. I think if you read that, I think it says the city's minutes should state what the financial reports were provided. So I just sent, those are sent out. So I have a simple communication to Mr. Gears, President Counsel. Here's the final, and if that's all he wants to do, wonderful. We'll do that every month. Check it off, move on to the next one. So some are like this. And since they're in the minutes of Mrs. Winnebauer's Finance Committee report, we have proof that we're doing this. So that's a simple fix there. Low-hanging fruit, as I like to call it.
Does that need a policy? Or is that just doing it?
It doesn't say that it needs a policy. Now, one of the other things, I mean, thank you for that. There are some on here methods that do require a policy by Counsel. So we'll be bringing some of these things to Counsel for your approval, and then for the Auditor of State's approval as well. So by kind of reasoning for doing this is, let's put it out there, full disclosure. We all have one report that we're saluting and that we can all work on it together. I'd like to put this in a shared folder so we all can look at it.
And we've got one step that we can probably, Tim, we can work on. Making sure that you can access it and save stuff to it. So we put the reconciliations in.
Yeah, Mr. Bond's.
And so should that be provided in the minutes from Finance Committee to Counsel? Just a blank copy of that? Obviously, if it's like a 500, but just like, this is what we reviewed this meeting? If it's one page or would you?
I mean, I think like when I, like reading, I've got the thing pulled up, the Report on Accounting Methods. But I think basically what they're asking for is for just, I think, just the cities, the city council, the full city council's minutes that they had stated in that they'd received the reports. And Tim and I actually had a discussion on this a little bit today. He thinks that it could need more detail, but what we should probably do is get, like when you see her on Monday, or, sorry, Friday, I'm going to be here Friday when she's here. Yeah, so we should just present to her a copy of these minutes, like maybe 10 last years worth of minutes where this is in there and say, look, can you please clear this? Like, let's clear this because the problem right now, and I got, and Tim's actually, he's Tax Commissioner Tim Wages. He's making, I kind of created like this off sheet of your spreadsheet that's kind of easier, a little bit easier to read. So he's printing them off now so you all have a copy to look at right now while you're there. So I think Tim, he's rocking it.
Yes, sir.
Awesome.
Yeah. So you'll see some that are obviously a little more, a little more in depth. Some of them are just as simple as that. I think there is also a comment that referred, I think, in the past there had been invoices that had not been paid in a timely manner. So what we've done to reinforce the fact that we are paying, we issued checks on Mondays and Thursdays. Sasha wants a check run on Mondays and Thursdays. So our goal is to make sure we're capturing all of our invoices that need to be paid and get them paid on time. So those are some of the things that we're trying to do as well. So you'll see that comment down here. I didn't know if you wanted to go through all of them or just, this is something that we're going to be reviewing on a monthly basis, and we can talk about it in the interim. And as we get updates and clarification from the Auditor of State's office, we can make additional comments or update the comments as well. And to Mr. Bond's point, like the last one, very simple one, just check with her and make sure that that is something that covers that comment, and we can clear that one. So the goal is to put them in yellow, clear them. There are some that are approved. Some of them have already had Counsel vote on them. So I think I have the dates in there, but I would like to put maybe the earnings and the rest of the gene on there for just for clarity as well. Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, but Tim passed me on a copy. We kind of like adjusted this a little bit just to make it bring them on page. So I combined a few columns, but I mean, have all the information. But basically, it kind of gives you all a chance to, yeah. Thank you, Tim, for doing some of this. Awesome. The problem, I guess, Mr. Miracle, that I'm kind of seeing, and I mean, I don't know if it's your finance committee, they think it's like, so many of these things I think are like done, but they don't have years marked in that column H. So I guess, is this kind of our internal spreadsheet? Or is this also what Anna Mary is tracking it?
This, I've shared this with her. And I sent her an email today that I wanted to make sure that she's posted back to me, which I have not had any mail back from her in some time. So that's why I wanted to live with this on a monthly basis. Hey, I'm assuming she has updated so that what we can put on here is actually what is currently happening.
So you think that she believes that more of this is cleared?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. So let's read the numbers for that.
Yeah, there are, in fact, I know there's a couple. I want to, I want to make sure, you know, I think you're clear. You might think you're clear. I want to make sure that she clears us for messing up that. So that's why she was copied on this. She's going to be copied on this. I just want to make sure that we're all aligned on this. So if there's nothing, but he thinks it's clear and she's following, maybe you still got to do this. So I just want to make sure it's complete, we're all on the same page.
Yeah, well, and I guess, yeah, to that point, I mean, personally, I would recommend when sending, like if we believe that it's cleared, like I would put it in here that it's cleared. And so she's thinking, I mean, if we're sending her this document, and we don't even have some, like these things marked as cleared that maybe she thought was cleared or whatever, and now she's like, oh, well, the city doesn't even think it's cleared. So why would I think it's cleared? I would almost try to like.
We did this.
Yeah, I would mark it. And then if she feels like something's not, then she can come back to us. But if then you've got evidence, then too, where she's like, oh, well, that wasn't done. It's like, oh, well, I've sent you a copy of what our understanding where we are in the Part of Accounting Methods, and it's had cleared for four months now, and you never said anything. How are we supposed to make it clear?
So starting, I want to make sure we get all the information on here accurately and then move forward each month.
I think we're on now.
All right, okay. There we go. Thank you.
Yeah, no, that's good. No, no, it's great. Yeah, I just want to, this is going on for a very long time. And they do change the goalposts, but also like when there's something that happened seven years ago and they still have it, they don't mark it as clear.
I think, and I didn't ask Mr. Winnebauer how we're talking about this. There are some things that I'm aware of that have been tested. So we're going to look at that. And I do that to something that if we've done in '24, '25, '26, '27, '28, '29, obviously, we're doing it correctly. We're going to continue to get it in '25. That's the whole point of this, right? Is to establish policies, procedures, so that we do it right. And that's my take on this. So if it's four years in a row, it's been right, it's going to continue to be right if we continue to follow the procedure that we've outlined here. So, yeah, and that's very well spoken. So, yeah, but we're going to go, we're going to start here and then move forward. And I think your suggestion of, yeah, these are cleared and we'll move on.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Confidently safe.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, like stuff that we know that she's checked and that we can talk to her about. So there's one number, it's number, comment number six, that I just want to kind of comment on what additional work that we might have to do in the Treasurer's Office. So I don't know if, in the City's Policy and Procedure Manual, if this is covered already, but basically it's safeguarding the monies that the city receives. So ensuring that stored, monies are stored in locked drawers or locked safe if they're kept overnight in like in the rec or in place. So if this is not addressed, which I don't think it is, Tim and I missed this. We're going to have a policy that we're going to put forward. And the goal will be for it to apply to everybody in the city. So basically, we'll bring it to Counsel then to get Counsel's blessing on it at the next Counsel meeting. So Tim and I are working on that now. And then we've got to get Noah to sign off on it as well just to make sure that he's cool with it. But basically, there's been times in the past where we've had, you know, departments that will like just hold their checks until the end of the week and then bring them all to us. Where, you know, what the Report on Accounting Methods says that we need to get those every day, like we need to deposit those every day. And so.
Yeah, and that one, they did test it in '23, and they tested in '24. And they'll say they'll test it again in '24. So that's the number six you referred to?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's the last time I.
Yeah, good to know, that's good to know. So, yeah, but I think, yeah, because we read this, Tim read this yesterday and was like, oh, it mentions the Report on Accounting Methods, it's about a policy. So we're going to make sure that that policy's there. And honestly, it's probably well-needed because then we can hold departments accountable if they're not, you know, fulfilling, and they know what's expected of them. So just to let you know that's kind of on it. We're going to have that next Counsel meeting.
Okay. Great to know. You got it? All right, Chris. Any questions?
I think this is great, especially the way to check up on it every month.
Yeah, and it's, you know, I think, Mr. Brady, it's been a while. So I think we just need to aggressively pursue this and if it goes as quickly as possible. We're here to be all prepared for you and note back where you stand. And make sure that we're sure this is without other safety. Your street board will think you're standing for it.
So I would say one big question from that via Counsel is confirming what the state, what amount of detail do they want us, do they want to see in the reports of the minutes? We provided this financial information.
One sense.
Yeah.
So there wasn't really much detail on that, for sure. Yeah, that's certainly valid question. Follow-up, what do you want to see? Exactly what do you want to see? What we got to do? Because it's simple enough, we can, that's an easy tip.
Okay. Anything else on the Report on Accounting Methods? So I was thinking too as well, like, you know, we'll have the tab, but this is something that I'll include in my minutes to Counsel as well. Just this was January's updates. And then that'll obviously be recorded too as well in the Excel file. That will also be on the website. All right, I will be up to my seat if we have nothing else on the accounting methods. Mr. Bond's with the radio. You guys have the floor?
Yeah, so you want to add the reconciliations.
Welcome back.
So in your, what we provided in the folder here, Tim printed off for you all the bank reconciliations from August 2024 to December 2024. So basically, it's a three-page document that, for each one of them, it's a three-page document that shows the beginning balance of all of our accounts. And you can see the details by account of the balance, of where the balances are. So beginning balance of all of our accounts, the, you know, the total revenue for the month, total expenses, and then just kind of some other various items. But did you have something you were wanting to just bring up?
So this is the folder, you guys have this before. So this is the folder, yeah, created a month back that has most of this information in. So as soon as it is completed in our office, it goes to this, then you guys are able to reference. Anytime that you'd like, as long as you're on the server. So if you go into your Counsel folder, I don't have access to the entire Counsel folder. I have access to this one specific folder inside of there. So I can't take you step by step all the way through. But if you go into your Counsel folder there, you'll see financial data, and it'll have a spot for the Treasurer and the Auditor's Office. And then, Mr. Miracle, I just sent your email yesterday or day before about this specifically. So this is already in, we do have a shared folder that you and I both staff, off staff, has access to, and then all the Counsel members also have access to it. But then that's it. That's where it's submitted to. So the rest of the city all have access. But just to where everybody can kind of see that. And then all the bank statements are in there as well as these signed reconciliations here in multiple quarters. Are all present pretty clearly.
So it just says Counsel, I guess, I'm just curious as Counsel members, have you all, do you all know how to access this? Or have you all been able to open that or get to that?
This is new.
I've tried. I sent an email trying to get access, but I won't.
So I can double-check the TA tomorrow to ensure, but we've checked before to make sure that everyone has the permission to access.
And I don't know how exactly too that they would like log, because I mean, they don't have, they're not sitting at the city, you know, at a computer terminal, right? But I don't exactly know, do they log into like a VPN?
I believe they have a access capability. But yes, it was originally done under, you know, but there's going to be a VPN where they acquire the city access to server permitting, which I believe is still in progress.
I've not tried to access it from home yet, so that would.
I think I have it.
So it sounds like if you're on your, I guess, well, you're at the city, but if you're on the computer, yeah. But yeah, it's, I mean, there's a lot of information there. It sounds like the Auditor's going to put some decent stuff on there too. I just want to make sure you all can get it because, and if you can't, definitely reach out to TA to figure out the best way for you to access it. Because I think there's, like I said, there's a lot, really great information there. I'm sure that we're going to keep expanding it and putting more information on there. So that just allows you all to be able to exercise the transparency that you all need to for.
Yeah, I have it right here.
Perfect. But we did go ahead and print off the reconciliations for now. So, you know, like I said, we can put this on the agenda for the next item as well. I didn't get this to you all by email beforehand, but it's in your folder. They can be able to see each month. One item of note that Tim and I, like are very much, or this won't be on the January, should not be on at the end of the month, but on the page two of the December one, you'll see the reconciling items under banking. It says there's a bank account that's not on the books, but it's in the bank. It's like $85,000. You know, they had various accounts when they were doing all this retirement healthcare stuff and things. They had all these different accounts that they would put money in that would allow them to then disperse it to the company that was overseeing the retirement, like the retirees' healthcare. We, most of those have been closed. This one account hasn't just because it's not listed. Like basically, it's, does it, the money is not on the books for the city. So that's changing, like is that done today or is that tomorrow? That we'll have that?
March is.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, so, yeah, that's right. So basically, we are, we're going to do a pay-in for that and just mark it as just miscellaneous revenue to the city and then close the account and, you know, transfer the money out of that account and transfer it somewhere else. So starting in January, you will not see that line item on there. The third line item here, and this is something, you know, the Auditor's Office will need to work on too, but there's like $118,000, which is reconciling items from, it's basically, I think, the full year 2022, but of just items that need to be fixed. And, you know, we've gotten that list to Marcus. I think Marcus is probably working on it. But that's where, how we kind of bring that down. So like the, basically those, we'll just need to get different transactions. You know, each one of those items, it's, you know, just a decent amount of work. But each one of those items is a, going to be probably an entry, a journal entry that's going to have to get made to basically fix things that, you know, there's things that need to get added, things that need to get taken away, things that were, whatever. But after we did all the reconciliations, we found, you know, all those items from 2022. So that'll allow that to go down. And then the other two items that Lyndon, we're working on that Fund 87, and then the two cents for the water pay-in, that's getting addressed. So that won't be there for the January item. But yeah, so these are here. So you have these, you know, you'll skip them monthly. We had a little bit of a delay, but from a, you know, just a different staffing thing with people being out of the office for extended periods. But we're in a good place now, and you'll be getting these, like I said, monthly. Did I miss anything, Tim?
Yeah, so as we kind of progress along, we'll slowly see the US, we're going to leave them on there for a little bit just for kind of simplicity purposes, but you'll slowly see the US Bank accounts kind of start falling off of there. So we won't maintain any balances. We've shut down a couple of them. The water department one you'll see still has a residual balance of about $47,000. It's seeming to be rather difficult to get closed for some reason. I'm not sure. So it's actually been closed and then reinstated, and we're working on it second time. But we'll work with that. We're hoping to get all those closed. So we'll see this a little bit more in the bank. You know, we'll put this report up a little bit. It's also the kind of the state for a little too. When they look at, they see reconciling items, but they're like, it's not on the bank statement. You know, there's just two bank statements for every account now versus one. So we've been kind of working with those files. But as you say, we're on the home stretch there of closing all those out. Most of the main accounts for US Bank that we have, has had some transactions in the last 60 days, which is kind of what we've been waiting on, make sure there's random outliers or something that, you know, we close the account and then we can send back. So that'll, that'll happen in the next couple of months. Back to current account, we'll show them later.
Yeah, okay, yep. So the earnings tax for, there's two things that are in here. One of them is a City of Norw, it says, earnings tax receipt summary. So this basically kind of compares 2024 to 2023 from earnings taxes. It's not the, like, it's just the format that comes out of MIT, which is the accounting software that the city uses. The license fee every year is pretty affordable. So, and it does its job. So we, we continue forward, but we don't get the best reporting out of it, but that's okay. We, basically it shows here, so in 2023, at the end of the year, we had 22 million, we had received 22,114,000 in earnings tax revenue. And I am pulling up a spreadsheet. Okay. Yep. So, yep, 22,114,000, that is 2024. We had 22,698,000. So that's an increase of $584,000 for the year, a 2.6% increase from 2023. When we look at the, kind of the breakdown between individual net profit and withholding, in 2024, we had a $241,000 increase in individuals. We went from 1.37 million to 1.61 million. And that was a 17% increase for individual collections. And that's attributable to a couple of things. One, we sent the postcards out this year that had the, like our city, our responsibility campaign, basically letting people know that they do need to file. And that led to a significant increase in people that were filing. The other item was we are starting to get for Factory 52 specifically, we are going after, not going after, but like basically the Norwood has an ordinance that, you know, owners of leased property have to provide the city with a tenant list quarterly of that. So that's commercial and residential. So we're starting to pursue that more and we, so we get the tenant list basically for Factory 52. And then anytime, once we get past the filing deadline, if we haven't heard from them and we know that they've been there the year before, we send them letters to say, hey, come in, you need to, you need to bring your account up to date. Like, we haven't heard from you. So. And we know they're there because we get the full, gets the, it's the greatest source data because it's the leasing data from the actual, you know, apartment complex, the apartment.
Are you dealing with any other properties? Were you speaking of?
We're, so we're starting, we're starting on one rookwood. Have we actually received it yet for one rookwood?
I haven't seen it on the list.
Okay. Yeah. So we have that for one rookwood and a few other, like, we do get people that randomly comply that like, you know, so a lot of them are like people that have owned property for years and years and years, and they just, you know, they continue to keep doing it because it, there's been times in the past where the city's pushed it more. But I would say after this year, we're probably going to make a, we're going to still go after the larger ones, but after this year, we're going to make a more concerted effort to get as many of them as we can. Part of the SRP is going to be, what we're going to request is to have an extra tax clerk. So we'll see. I mean, ultimately the mayor will decide if he can fit that in with everything else that's going on. But having an extra tax clerk will give us the time then to pursue that. So that's where we're heading. But yeah, and we've seen some decent, like, I mean, it's been interesting. I don't see them personally, but like, you know, the staff was reporting when people will come in, there'll be times where somebody's being withheld for Cincinnati instead of Norwood, or they'll, they'll just be like, they won't have withholdings for earnings taxes for whatever reason. And so, you know, we'll get a multi thousand dollar check from some of these people and.
Work from home is a really big thing kind of right now. So we see people not being withheld. And that kind of, it throws, it throws the numbers off in the earnings tax report. So if we correct the payroll problem, that's going to come through as a withholding, not so much as an individual taxpayer.
You can go to the microphone there.
But it, it has, it has kind of shifted with the work from home model. So we, we've pretty much added 700 or so withholding accounts over the last two years. And 90% of those are specific to work from home employees. So they're random companies, onesies and twosies from all over the place that'll have single employees inside the neighborhood. So we're having to create accounts for them. And then they're, you know, withholding the tax for their employer and, or the employee and remitting it to us. But that's just one of the things that's kind of shaken out as we're going through these tenant lists, sending out letters, you know, requesting people to file as they're, they're coming in and the same thing, if they're being, for some reason, there's a few payroll softwares that doesn't really understand that Norwood is a city. So whenever they put in the 212 zip code, it just refers it right back to Cincinnati. So it's complete error. It's just an accident, but it takes us some time to catch and then it's kind of a process. So those individuals or that company has to go back to Cincinnati, then request that refund. And then, you know, they still owe us the full balance of the 2%. But that is, that's happened a lot since, you know, post COVID. And, you know, we started kind of some extra efforts on getting filing compliance and stuff like that. So it's, it all, it all kind of shakes out right there at the end. And sometimes it's a little hostile, but, you know, we're getting it right. And then hopefully it's, you know, it's correcting things for the future to where we're not continuing to see the same thing.
Yeah. No, thank you. Yeah. Thank you for that, Tim. So in that, so that was the individuals. So like I said, we saw that 17% increase. The net profit we saw, we went from 5.3 million in 2023 to 4.78 million. If you remember when we were doing the estimates that we talked about that, like we did an analysis on, in 2023 of that 5.3 million. So these are basically companies that are basically paying taxes on the profits that they generate through being in the city of Norwood or their employees being in the city of Norwood. And so with that, like I said, with that 5.3 million, we, we looked at it and almost 50% of the 5.3 million was from companies that had no net profit tax that we received in 2022. So like, and I just kind of like, and I'm sure if we would have done the same analysis in 2022 over 21, we would have seen some similar volatility. But there's just volatility in how, like, you know, when profits are generated, like some people have real estate, some people, there's just a lot of, it can go up and down about when they actually owe taxes to us. So we had, we had thought that because that was so high, that we definitely wanted to be conservative in 2024 with our earnings tax estimates, which is, which kind of proved out to be a little bit true because we, we were 10% down in net profit tax in 2024 versus 23. So the thing that I guess that we didn't anticipate as much is that we had a, you know, five, almost 6% increase in withholding taxes and then a 17% increase in individual taxes though, that we collected. So that's, you know, balanced out to be like positive for the city, but we always, we would love that any numbers that we think are going to happen actually happen to the, you know, to the nose. We don't want to be guessing too low or too high because that affects other things. So. But there was a positive variance to the city, you know, from what we thought was going to be there. Yeah. And then just refunds on here. So you'll see that there, you know, we had a little bit less of refunds than we did last year. So those usually stay relatively consistent. Most of those refunds I think are from large, like larger filers. Is that correct? Yeah. Larger filers that like will audit their books and find something that was off for these past couple of years. And we work, we work with them, evaluate it and decide. And that's kind of where most of that comes from. Any questions? I can, I'll put them up. Okay. And then, so the last thing I have is earnings taxes. Our estimates in for 20, 2025 through 2029. So this is for the, the five year, the estimates for the financial recovery plan. So we are estimating for 2025, 22,750,000. So there's some, it's a little bit more than what we finished in 2024. So Tim, do you want to talk about kind of some of the reasoning why we kind of went with that number? I mean, I have it here too, but then you, Tim did the major legwork here to do the research on this and bring this all together.
I didn't, I didn't print out my justification. I didn't bring it up here, but.
Oh, okay.
So a portion of it was like James said, the kind of the one off, you know, random large net profit payment that we received twice consecutively. So that's kind of, it was weird, you know, which kind of threw everything off. But that, that kind of threw it in there. We, we can see where those large payments were really, it fed off about three years worth of their earnings tax or their net profit tax. So we might've received a million dollars, but that didn't mean that they actually owed a million dollars for that year. Which, you know, it's just a, a little different way of looking at it. But with the increases that we've seen in individuals, we expect those to be the same, you know, hopefully the same going through 2025 with our, you know, increased efforts in compliance, the increased population with Factory 52, some of the other larger developments that are going up. So we, we did estimate that we would see an increase in individual earnings in 2025, as well as just a regular cost of living increase for the withholdings in 2025. When you kind of totaled it all together, you know, those three main categories, we came out to the 22,750, which I believe is roughly $50,000 more or so than the 2024 actuals. I'm sure the state likes to see that a little bit better. We were kind of reserved a little bit. We're still trying to establish a good baseline as to, to where to start from, to where to grow from. We're seeing, you know, the, two years ago, we seen a 10% year over year gain. The year after that was a 13% year over year gain. So, and we're seeing that on, you know, roughly $20 million. So it's not a lot, but we definitely can't just estimate an additional 10% gain every year. That would be, I mean, incredible, but I don't think that's feasible. But. So we came up with the, the 22,750 as something that is reasonable. It is also, you know, an increase nonetheless, but it is something to where even we're kind of riding that line. If we miss, we're right there. But if we go over, we're probably still right there. Just so it gives the administration a little, a little extra, but we know that we can fulfill.
Yep.
Samuel, sir?
Yeah, I think that, I think that's good. So, yeah, we've estimated basically when he was kind of calculating it, it was, we were estimating about 4.25 million for net profit tax, which is about 5% decrease. 1.8 million for individual, which I think would be about, I think six or seven, oh, sorry. Yeah, that would probably be like a 15, 10 to 12% increase because we have additional like efforts we're going to make. So, and then withholding a 3% increase. So it's kind of like what was behind those numbers from where we are. So. Hopefully, I mean, with net, the net profit tax is always the one that's like completely, we just don't know. Cause like, we just don't know who's going to bring. There's companies that you wouldn't, that are small and not really like all that vocal, you just don't really kind of hear about them all that much. And then we get a large check from them, like, you know, it's for the net profit portion. So it's always, and then there's some companies that are big and vocal or, you know, just kind of out there and we don't get anything from them just because of the way that their company is structured. So.
Sorry, what did you say here? Is it less for net profit?
Yep. 4.25 million.
Oh. The net profit. Thank you.
Yeah, you're fine. Yeah, you did great, Tim. Thank you for all the work that you put into that. So.
Great job in 2024.
It's, there's, it's all this, it's, I mean, I know I say this, but it's the staff really, you know, in the office, they're the ones that does the work on a day to day basis. Like, so we're very blessed to have really great staff at the, in the tax office and the charge group. So, thank you. Oh, yeah. Yeah. We did want to note that too. Thank you. So we did have over a million dollars last year in interest earnings for the city. So we're, yeah, we're very, very proud of that. I think the board of health, we're like their number one source of income. I'm pretty sure, or for the number two source of income for them. So we, I think we earned them like 30 something thousand dollars in interest. So we're, yeah, it's something that we're, we're following. You know, there's also going to be some, we can do, you know, we're going to be, we're very happy with how things are going with that. And so we don't know what the interest rate environment is going to look like in the future, but you know, while we have the interest, we're, it's a very good thing for the citizens.
The Otters and Tax Department. Do you somewhere or do you like the?
Here.
Yeah. Kind of catch us up? We have ordinance and then also the quotes from the press.
Okay. I got. You get to break that on the top.
Yes.
Okay. And then I added the page three here, which kind of gives you an overview of our fleet.
Perfect. We do not have that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. We've got three here.
Yes.
That's it then.
All right. Well, thanks for having me. I'll go through this paper just to let you guys know about what I know. Originally we put in to lease some vehicles. And the reason why we picked to lease is because we're at a critical stage right now in our fleet that we need multiple cars now instead of one each year. We have, well, first of all, over the, over the Christmas, New Year's, we were down to four vehicles. We have 32 police officers and we only had four vehicles. The vehicles that we did had, they have, they had to double up and we've had an officer and a sergeant basically come into work, sitting in the station for 12 hours because we just don't have no transportation for them to go out there. The first quote was to lease for the, according to the FRP, and I know the FRP is not for leasing, but the appropriations that I should, the police department should get for capital improvements for the purchase of vehicles, the leasing aspect of it falls within those, that range. So we have plenty of money in there throughout the next four years. But those four came in a little high after we got a wrong quote. So we're asking for three. So what three does is it doesn't fix our problem, but it helps. And it helps by each year when we pay these down. The goal is to also purchase while we're leasing these three, there would stood, there should still be enough in the FRP and the capital improvements to purchase an additional one. And then the year, year two, we would be, as you can see in that, that book spreadsheet, year two, we would only be paying $45,000. Our FRP allotment is 165,000. So we take that balance, the difference of that, and we can purchase an additional car. And we do the same thing in year 2028. Page three, that spreadsheet you have, so the three that's highlighted in red, those were, those were taken out of service due to an auto accident. One obviously was on the news where the officer got hit on the highway. The other one, an officer got T-boned out here on Montgomery Road. And what happens when that happens? When we have a vehicle get wrecked or totaled and it goes out of service, we don't get the insurance premiums to replace that vehicle. So we lose the vehicle and now we don't have the opportunity to replace it until the following year, till I put in our capital improvements for another police car. And I may get one or two, but I'm never going to get that replacement. Does that make sense? So I'm always going to be one or two behind if these keep getting taken out of service. We try to plan for that. We don't want to see, you know, our officers wrecking or getting into wrecks. So we try to plan for it, but we should have a sturdy and a strong enough fleet that when those incidents happen, it shouldn't take us out of business. It shouldn't take, it shouldn't take us down to four where we have officers not being able to control the neighborhoods. The three, the four bottom ones, we've been having issues with those. We did purchase these cars last year. We have a brand new K-9 that we purchased a year ago, February 1st, and it's not completed. It's, it's in Columbus, still getting fixed. The, the last three Dodge Durangos, we purchased those last year in July. And those are nowhere closer to be outfitted now as they were when we purchased them. There's some serious issues going on with the outfitter. So we're not using this outfitter anymore. So if this is approved and we get to purchase these three, we're, we're taking our business elsewhere. So hopefully, we, hopefully these, these four are done within the next couple of weeks. That's what they keep telling us, but we don't, we really don't trust that assessment. So in the first, the first page, basically it breaks down the, the price of the vehicle, the price of the vehicle at 67.8, that encompasses the actual vehicle itself and the complete outfitting of, of the car. The monthly payment, the, the positive thing about this is if you look down to the very last, the reduced book value at 48 months, the $86.67, this isn't necessarily like a lease. This is a basically a quick payment. So once we pay these cars off, these cars are ours for $86. So we're not going to get in a hole, we're not going to owe enterprise a whole bunch of money. This is basically financing these cars over four years. So that's kind of where I'm at, we're at now. Guys, have any questions for me?
How many vehicles do you, good vehicles running healthily, do you typically need to have a?
We should have 13 functional cars.
You had four at the end of last year?
We had four running at the end of last year. We have, we had six before I started to come over here and then I got, I checked the board and the, if you look at the, the third page, the 167, the supervisor vehicle. And that one only has 63,000 miles on it, but that one just went down with an engine problem. So that brings us down to five.
So these three added on is basically to help cover the ones that we've already bought, but aren't.
Yeah. So we're not, we're not actually gaining cars. We're. Yeah. So we're not, we're not actually gaining cars. We're just replacing the three that we were involved in the crashes last year.
Yeah.
And then if this is approved, these three will essentially replace some of the ones at the top of this list. Cause we have one car that's 10 years old, two that's eight, and one that's six. Typically, when you get around the four year range, you need to start rotating your vehicles. You need to turn those vehicles in. And that costs, that creates the problem with the repair costs. My, my repair cost last year was right around 56, $57,000, almost the price of a vehicle. All these come under warranty. We're responsible for oil changes in vehicles or tires. So that should bring that cost down a lot. And the plan is to not stay on a lease. That's, that's not the plan at all. The, the plan is to get an influx of vehicles that solves a problem now. While these are being paid off to try to again, purchase one additional one each year and try to make some headway. When these leases are done and we basically, when we pay $86 for these to get them, they're ours, we don't plan on going back into a lease unless, unless it's need be. But that's, that's not the overall plan. The overall plan is to get to a point where every year or every two years, preferably every two to three years, you take three vehicles, you, you do away with them and you replace them with three new ones. And that's how you keep a decent fleet going.
So this is all A-OK through the FRP. I mean, kind of budget wise, how does it look going forward? Cause this is going to be an adjustment for you.
Um, yeah, that's something that I think that she said that she would have to change. I know she, I know they're not necessarily into leasing. I think they understand. I think there was some leasing with fire department stuff. But they said we had to come here for approval first, for council, obviously. It may work out better that at the end of this lease, right? Cause I think her concern was that once these four years happen, that we are, that they're not ours, that we, you know what I mean? Like on a, on a typical lease, you still have to pay several thousand dollars, whatever the decapitalized price is. That's not going to happen now. We're going to, we're basically going to finance this. And it's almost going to be paid down to zero at the end of this 48 months.
Okay. I mean, so this contract verifies $86 at the end and.
Correct. There's no, there's no over mileage charges. I know they go by a 20,000 mile mileage range. They manage our fleet. They come out quarterly, check the milages, check the, they, they're still going to hold the title, which actually helps us if we do get into a crash and a vehicle was totaled. So that way they're, they're, since they hold the title, that money will be reimbursed to the police department to replace that, that car. But no, there's, there's no hidden fees. There's no over mileage fees at all. They just maintain everything. They'll, if they get to a point where they feel that turning this vehicle in and maybe going into another lease because of the, the retail amount that they may get, they may bring that to the table, but we don't really, I don't have an interest in that.
Okay. The out, the ones that we've already purchased that are in limbo, I know that's kind of hard, but any plans if the service doesn't work out? Or do they just kind of have the vehicles and what kind of?
Enterprise still has the vehicles in their lot.
Okay.
The, the problem that I get into is we're kind of at the mercy with enterprise because we paid enterprise the price of the vehicle along with the cost of getting it outfitted. And then enterprise pays Valor outfitting 50% for them to do it. So, but I think we're at the point now where we've already paid for our cars and outfitting. So at enterprise needs to make it whole with us. We, we need to take our cars. They need to get them outfitted. And whatever money they need to recoup from Valor is going to between them and, and enterprise.
And that's what the cars we've already purchased.
Yes. Yes. That's, yeah, the, the three Durangos.
Okay.
I don't know at this point if we have any legal standing because like I said, we've already paid for our services technically. And then, but enterprise has, is contracted to Valor.
Okay.
But we also paid for a service that we're not getting either. So.
I just got a couple of comments. I appreciate you, appreciate that, Chief Sumner for, for that. If it was up to me, I'm in favor of giving Mr. Sumner 13 vehicles if that's what he needs. Chief Sumner, my apologies. It's, it's, I, I get a little frustrated when I, because I, in these situations, I try to think about, well, what would I do at my own kitchen table? And if we're sitting there talking about, you know, the leasing is a bad deal. We just turned a lease in. My son just turned a lease in. It's a, it's not a good deal. It's not, it's a bad deal. So I'm not going to act like it's a good deal. I, I wish we could just buy the vehicles, you know, and, and, you know, 60, 67,000 or 50, 57, I think was for, for a new, it just seems, it just seems a little bit, we just, we just approved on top of all the other pay, pay, you know, raise, raise this and raise that. And, and then we just destroyed $55,000 worth of crap guns. And that's, you know, it's just annoying that, to hear that there's only four police cruisers at the end of the year and that we're destroying that type of money when we could just, we could really enforce these guys with what they need. So it's, I, I'm in favor of giving him what he needs, but just frustrating that we destroy that type of money when it could help us better. So.
You have notice driving by. There's no cruisers in the parking lot.
There's not. The goal is to get on a rotation and that's, and that's, that's, that's the reason for the, for the lease. I mean, there, there's enough in there for me to go buy a cruiser, but that's, that's not going to solve a problem. Because by the time we get that one on the road, you're probably going to have another one break down. So you're just replacing, you're going back and forth replacing one cruiser at a time. We need an influx of cruisers. We still need some, some money in between that cost and the FRP and the, the lease payment, which we have in here. And then we can, we can buy these cruisers, one or two each year, whatever the funds come up to be. And it should get us back on track. By the end of this lease, if we also purchase a car each year, we will, we will, instead of replacing each one, we should start gaining a few, and that's going to help a lot.
Yeah. This is a question just enterprise wise, you know, they have these vehicles that they can lease us. Why not? We just buy those instead of the ones we already bought that haven't been outfitted? Is this something that we can kind of keep an eye on of like, this is costing us more money because they're not following through with what we've already paid? I don't know. Like.
Well, I think this, this outfitters that we are, went to, it's not, I mean, everyone in the county uses them.
Yeah.
They have another subsidy up in Columbus where they outfit Whitehall, Dublin, Bexley. But they're just, they fired half their staff. I think they got some serious money issues. The Cincinnati location is pretty much non-existent. They called and asked for permission to drive our K-9 car to Columbus to get it fixed. And then after about two weeks, we called them and asked them where it was. And all the parts that they said that they had ordered were the wrong parts. The parts that we've been waiting 11 months to get. So now we have to continue to wait. So, but we, we've all cut ties with this place. So we will not be doing any more business. We already have several outfitters ready to go. I've already went and met with them and they have most of the parts there. So they're, they're good to go.
Great.
A question? Maybe this is a dumb question. We have insurance, but you, you leased the vehicles and we, we get into a wreck and damage and we're covered? And do we owe for the vehicle? Or we're covered on that? Or?
The, the.
We all three, they all three get crashed, the same crash, and they're all three gone? We owe for that? Like, you know?
I don't believe so. The, the insurance money that they get, that's why they hold the title. They make sure that we recover the costs so we can get another vehicle.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
That's what I've been told.
I just, I, I, maybe I, help me out because you said that when, I should understand this, but you said when you, when you wreck a vehicle, you don't get that premium.
Correct.
You don't get that premium. So would you explain that to me one more time?
Well, it's been my understanding, because I've been through several of them. When a car gets totaled, someone hits a car and it's totaled and it cannot be repaired. The insurance money, I believe, goes into the general fund. It doesn't go back into my appropriations.
Okay.
So therefore I lose the car and I lose at that point, the proceeds to purchase another car.
Okay. Okay.
That's the way it's always been.
Okay.
And then I have to wait to the end of the year when we do a budget to try to replace that car. And like I said, depending on how the appropriations come in, I may get one or two cars, but I'm never really getting the one that we just lost. So we're always in the hole.
Thank you.
All right.
Any other questions? Thank you for your time and explanations.
Thanks.
That was it on the agenda. Any other questions, comments?
Oh, I do. Mr., Mr. Powers, it's been a long wait already. Are there any implications of federal grant money that we've got paused in Norwood?
Don't have an answer to that question, but I've been asked it several times today. I do understand that there's been a temporary injunction in place for that. So I don't know how long that's going to last. I don't know what the impact of that'll be, but we don't know the impact at this point.
I figured most of ours are state and county grants, but I didn't know what federal things we had in the line.
Well, it can be a little bit hard because sometimes things might be a state grant, but it's federal dollars. So things that don't look like they could be impacted, could be impacted. We just don't know what that's going to shake out to at this point.
Thank you.
All right. I probably won't have my notes ready for council. I know we will be voting on the, the ordinance for the cruisers. But I'm sure we can share our input and everything that Chief Sumner on all that. All right. All right. Well, if nothing else, we will close our finance meeting. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.